So, um, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Board of Selectmen Work Session for Tuesday, February 4th. And our primary goal today is to talk about budget and capital review. There are announcements, so this meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk for record keeping. And Mr. Gant has also indicated he will be recording the meeting as well for sharing, I guess, on Facebook? If I'm correct, or YouTube, YouTube, I guess. There's an attendance sheet being circulated. David, I'm not sure you have to sign anything, I suspect.
I'll put it in the paper.
I think you know.
Do you have a pen?
You got an extra pen?
Yeah. Always.
I left mine in the, I was taking, I was babysitting John Spencer.
Oh, sorry. I mean...
I was babysitting John. I left all my stuff in the car.
Let the minutes reflect, David refuses to sign the sheet.
Well, I was just gonna start printing it with your name on it.
As long as we're fine.
What'd you do, get some coaching from Kim Sherwood? She never signed either.
Oh, it was Eldon, wasn't it?
Oh, Kim never did.
She didn't either. So, what I would like to do is turn the meeting over to Kevin Hartouni, our Town Administrator, and have you lead from here, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody. For a couple of us, continuation from last night. No, this is, this is, as we all know, the fourth meeting we're getting together in the working session to discuss budget. Three subsequent, or prior meetings, I should say. We went through the different departments, we had the departments here to go through what was behind those budget items, increases, level funding, et cetera. This meeting today, my hope is to, I know we had a lot of questions, some comments, but hopefully get some direction if there's anywhere within the budget through those discussions, where something that sticks out that we want to have a further discussion on and possibly make any adjustments. Following our meeting today, I'll be circling back with Catherine, and we'll make an adjustment to our omnibus budget, with some of the edits that were previously mentioned that, that we've already talked about, for some house cleaning areas. But any other adjustments we might make, if there's an area where we decide we want like to mix some cuts, et cetera, we'll reflect that in the next version that comes out by the end of the week. It'll be titled D2 for that purposes.
So, so an adjustment, let's think about that for a second. We have a separate sheet in the, in the budget, Excel worksheet, that has overguidelines.
Correct.
So, an adjustment is to take, for example, one of those items and add it back into the omnibus budget?
No, what I, what, so if you open it, if you have your budget...
Maybe it's not a big deal, I'm just trying to understand maybe the mechanics. It's not that important. We're gonna make decisions tonight, and how it runs out, it's up to you then.
So, if you notice on your, the budget that's been provided previously, the version one, after the last, the percentage increase in, under the orange categories, there's a fiscal 21 Board of Selectmen slash TA budget. So, that lines, those lines there, once we have a conversation today, those are what we'll be populating for the version two. And then from there, as you notice, is the finance committee's lines as well. So, we'll just, in this process, it'll be, you know, us collectively coming out with the next version of the FINCOM.
And basically, what you do is move version one number over to that column and add whatever comment, whatever comments we come up with today.
Or changes that we may make.
Changes, yeah.
By the way, I don't recall, Dick, you'll tell me if I'm wrong on this, that we've ever had a budget sheet presented to us that has the Board of Selectmen TA budget sitting in a column immediately adjacent to the FINCOM numbers for us to look at.
We've never had that.
So, I, you know, I thank you for bringing some incredible clarity to the process.
Yeah, no, it's important. I think that, you know, Catherine and I, right off the bat, we talked about sort of how that should work. So that every step of the way, it's, it's methodical and it's proper.
Well, I like the idea because it gives you better conversion control as well.
Sure.
You've got version one here, and that's gonna wind up being version two.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I would say Catherine did want to be here today, but she did have some obligation, personal obligations that prevented her from being here. There is a slight possibility she may come later in the meeting, but I did tell her that I don't want her to rush back. We'll be able to handle it. If there's anything that comes out of this meeting, that's still on, you need further information, more details, we'll get that and gather and provide it to you so we can make a, a quick decision on anything else we need to change. So, that's, in the timeline, to get a, a version two out by the end of this week, that's sort of just a target. It's a, it's a goal. Like I said, if we don't get through everything, or if there's still some things we want to get some more backup data for, we can still provide that a little bit later. I talked with John Guido about our next steps on that, and he said, oh, that's fine, because he's currently, as you know, meeting with all the department heads. And the TA's office didn't go last night, so we got that under our belts at least.
Thank you.
Make sure it's off, please.
We had a conference call with UCL, who is a master planner, who's, who's working Beverly. We're just getting some sense of what that might look like, just some planning purposes for the top field. So anyways, um, so, one thing, we went back, now that we've sort of been version one, which were the department heads' medals. There were certain, certain items where I went through department heads and I said, you know, I don't feel comfortable with this number, just even right off the bat, just coming in saying, let's propose for this or that. Grade changes, for example, I said, we're not doing any grade changes. And, that, just as one example. So, we've, we've basically, I provided a sheet, unfortunately, we, we don't have it for you today, that read, the old sheet, read basically, 4.84% increase from fiscal 20, fiscal 21, for the town budget only. The real number as it stands today is actually 4.6.
Is this where you're looking at?
Correct, in the very bottom, in the right-hand corner. That number's 4.6 currently. What we have for revenues for this year, um, you know, I, I will get you a copy of this. I did not have a chance to, but I'll, I'll, I'll just sort of read the numbers. We, for the tax levy, we have $26,376,372. From local receipts, we have $1,650,000. From the cherry sheets day A, we have $2,019,051. For purposes of balancing expenses and revenues, we also included the water indirect, which is $160,000. Budget offsets, which amounts to $54,000. And we assumed a free cash to reduce the tax rate of $300,000, because historically, we've done that year over year. That gives us revenues projected of $30,559,423.
Thirty million?
Thirty million, 559,423. So, then if you look at our expenses, our expenses, um, if you assume 3% on the schools, which we all know, we've already received what the schools have put in there, but if you assume that based on the guide, budget guidelines, that they were to meet the 3%, and you take all of our included costs in the zero, the wages and salary increases, and the other category, level funded, but then also add in above guideline requests, which were $302,191. The other expenses are 30,000, 30 million, 282,715. That's the operating budget on zero on the other category in level funding. That gives us expenses of $30,584,905. And my apologies, I didn't print this out for you folks, we'll get you a copy of that. What that ultimately gets us to is a net effect of $25,482 over what our expenses to revenue. So, we're, we're out of, I don't, out of compliance, but we're beyond what we have for revenues by $25,000.
Out of balance.
Out of a $30 million budget.
Yeah.
We're in good shape that way. That being said, we do have the schools still that are gonna come in higher than that. And that's sort of, it's part of the conversation, but a separate conversation at the same time as they work through their processes. But for our purposes, again, just assuming the 3% which we originally have in schools, we're pretty close from a budget standpoint to being balanced. So, I, I went through the budget, I have some ideas of places where we might be able to, you know, tighten the belt a little bit, trying to get to that 25. You might have some ideas as well, and that's why I didn't want to say this is the, this is what I want to, these are what I want to cut. I'd like to hear what you have as well. But, you know, that, for me, that's almost a target that I'd like to get to. Because I know, when you'd sent me over in your emails, talking about trying to create some limitations that go in above and beyond of what the, what the tax revenue and the local receipts and the state cherry sheet will look like. We're pretty close, which is good.
Now, on capital items.
Yes.
You're thinking of those as certainly not raise and assess, first of all, right?
No, they're not included in that number.
They're not included in that number, right? Because you're assuming that they, we're gonna be using free cash for them? Is that, is that a way of saying?
That's my understanding of the topic on that, yes. Just through the free cash, that, that, that does not...
That's one way.
So, we have, we have the capital here, and I'd like to try and touch on that as well. I think we talked about it last meeting.
I'm just trying to do the balance, I'm trying to agree that the...
And see, capital, you got nothing, this has nothing to do with capital at all.
This doesn't, but those numbers do.
Well, those...
Except that, the question is, how are we gonna fund capital? And if you assume they're coming out of free cash, then it doesn't apply to those numbers.
No, that's, that's right. So, basically, in the, in the capital, you know, we have some work. There's anything we want to push out. There was always the conversation about should we put in the operating budget the firefighter gear? Or the police, uh, police fire, uh, the police resources?
The cruiser.
Or the communication, the radios, or whatever that might be. Those are, those are things that I tend to, exactly.
It should eventually evolve.
You know, they're, they're, they're budget items that we see every year, and so why aren't they in the budget? You know, that's your point.
Sure, and the question then is, if that then goes from here to here, because those capital items are including in that number, we should still be pretty close to that 25,000. So, that's...
And, and where's, we talked about the school 3%, we're about the Masco element. And, and Masco, I don't know, capital they're asking for, I assume?
This year is light on capital because they're trying to revisit their capital plan. And spend and think they just...
So, it's not much, but it's still, we need the, we need to be able to fund Masco and have the technicals.
And the reality is, is that are they gonna be at 3% at the end of the day?
And is that set for 3% on elementary, Masco, and, okay?
This is based on guidelines for the schools.
Okay.
That was my question too, what the schools meant, so it's both elementary and Masco.
And technicals.
And technicals.
And technicals.
Secondly, it was 3% as well.
And the issue with, the issue with Masco element though is that the 3% is not necessarily our, well, that's the question. The 3% is their budget, upwardly budget, I assume. And then we have perhaps an adjustment based on how our population of students relates to others, so...
Which has gone up.
Our enrollment portion has gone up, so if they hold a 3%, we may get a 4%.
Okay.
Or 3.5, I don't know.
Okay, so those are things that may...
Right, so if we look and say, these are the revenues coming in, this is where we are right now, we're 25,000 over.
Yes.
That's the town hall portion, the town, everything other than the schools that has gone over. So, adding to that would be what the elementary schools will go over.
Yes.
Plus the Masco will go over.
Correct.
Plus the tech will go over.
Correct.
And the key, the key assumptions for the big items like health insurance, one of the assumptions that we're running with there, we're fairly good on with those assumptions? It's not like that. What, what is the, what did Maya say at MMA?
I, my knee was hurting too much, I did not go to that one.
Oh, you didn't, okay, oh.
Unfortunately, I was planning on it, but I didn't.
Donna Rich is actually, this morning, we talked about that. There was a couple of items from last night's meeting that I asked Donna to look into, including the insurance for the buildings, the property insurance.
Right, okay.
I also asked her to look, because at the MMA, they announced what those real increases look like. So, we still have the 5% in there, and I, we have not had a chance to verify the MMA.
So, so, right now, it's 5% on what we had in the budget last year?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's incorporated in here, or it needs to go up?
That's part of the 25K, right?
We could see some savings potentially in that line, I guess.
If it stays down. It was saying it would probably go higher, because they had a low one last year. This year, they're expecting it may go higher, but...
So, did that mean we need to put more in here, or we've already put more in here anticipating?
We've already put 5% in, whereas last year it was half or less. Yeah, it was something very low. And so, we're anticipating, the question is, did we anticipate enough or not? It's always a guessing game, of course.
And their sense, is it gonna be more than 5? Because they knew, their sense was it was gonna hold steady last year.
Well, here's the challenge, because as I understand it, they both have the costs that they have to pay for their carriers and so on, but I believe towns get rated on the basis of claims and so on. So, if we had fewer claims than we were actuarially expected to have, then our rate will be a little lower. If we had a lot more claims, then our rate would be just a little higher. So, those are things that I don't have access, or I haven't tried to get access to, but you might know.
Yeah, so when we, with Maya, they, it's, it's absolute part, that's part of the equation. The other part of it is, they actually look at the entire country. And they look at, you know, what the insurance impacts have been overall, to sort of, so, I was, I actually asked the question. So, I said, if North Carolina has six hurricanes back to back to back to back to back, and we have two inches of snow, and no, no hurricanes coming through, we're still gonna see the bump as a result of the impacts down there, and she said, yes. So...
They said yes?
Yes, yes. So, their rates are based on national carriers that are down to...
Well, it's a, it's on the national average plus, plus your history.
Yeah, the national carriers, they eventually go back up to national carriers. The national carriers are trying to even their exposure across all.
And if we do have claims, to John's point, too, that then impacts our numbers locally.
Um, this tax, can you tell right now from the numbers, the way they look, what does this mean for a tax increase?
If we were to eliminate the 25,000, the schools stayed at 3%, we would be level funded. And this actually...
It would be 2%, 2.5%.
No, I'm sorry, it would be, it would be within the two, proposition, 2.5.
So, we need 2.5% is basically...
We do have existing overrides that have been previously replaced, that we, we can draw off of that as well. Let's take it's 1.18 million on one, and then, let's see if I have that. I didn't draw off, Kevin. I've had a lot of papers, I haven't, I really slipped, my apologies. I don't know if I brought it with me today.
It's that complex, it really is. We understand.
We're a spreadsheet DJ, now we're gonna hear a little something from the capital.
And thank goodness for Catherine, because she keeps it organized at the end of the day. But there was, there's a really great sheet, and I'll make sure we get a copy of that. That will be, it's part of the, it's part of the file for the omnibus. It might actually be in here, just give me one second. Where it basically shows us the tax levy, exactly what that looks like from last year, what we can then carry over to this year, the 2.5%, and then includes the existing, the new growth associated with that, $75,000, which is what's being estimated on that front. And that gets us to, let me see if I have, so here are the real numbers that I have here. My apologies, I didn't bring it, but I certainly pulled that. Ultimately, though, the, the numbers that you're looking at, the revenue side, it's, it's, it's considering a 2.5% increase. It basically prevents us from going to an override.
Yeah, okay, so, if we, if 2.5%, if we can get that down, and then, do you have any sense of what the other numbers look like coming in?
Yeah, that's what we've been suggesting. As I said, I think Masco is going to be, and I'm hearing this anecdotally, I'm no longer an insider, but I'm hearing that they're gonna, it'll be less this year, and that will benefit some from the beginning of their debt to light off, so that, and we, we approve the money from them, but we include the debt and the operating there. So, I think they will be okay, but they're gonna do a roof repair.
But that's all capital, though.
I think it is, yes, I think it is.
Like the operating budget?
I think the operating budget shouldn't go up too much, except as Dick pointed out, if the proportion of our students goes up relative to the others, and I believe there is a little bit of a top field bump, you know, it can make a, you know, tenth of a percent or half a percent increase in our assessment.
So, the sense is they're gonna come in pretty level funded?
Wait until next year and the year after, because then they've got to start putting money into things like empty roofs. But they're going to do, the idea is that the roof repair they are contemplating, which is a half million plus as a capital item, buys them up to five years, at which point, it's gonna be necessary to replace the entire roof, and that's a $13 million job or something.
And this budget, Kevin, incorporates some reserve for the bargaining that you're about to do?
It does.
Sufficient that you think will be...
It comes out of the...
These numbers, we'll stick with these numbers?
Well, it's a great question. So, we're, we talked about it last night, we had $91,000 in, in, um, reserve fund. And then this year, we're asking, I believe it's for 125. And that's a salary reserve fund.
So, that's a 30% increase over last year that we're putting in reserve? Well, we didn't budget last year, what was the reserve for last year? I mean, we didn't bargain last year, so we knew what the amounts would be. So, why did we have 90 in reserve?
Well, let me say it differently, so my apologies, so the increase to, just bear with me one second, my apologies, I want to check if you could just briefly. So, last year was budgeted, we had appropriation for $91,000 for the salary reserve fund. This year, the total proposed department budget will be $125,000. So, $125,000 will be, will, that is for the contract negotiation.
Does we spend that?
Well, that's 34,000 bucks that you, you planned on for contract negotiation.
Correct, and...
That's the, that would be additional.
Isn't that part of the retirement?
The reserve, that's what I'm trying to find out, what the 91 for reserve was spent for last year, since we weren't bargaining?
It's the compensated reimbursement that the, just bear with me one second.
Oh, the comp time?
The comp re, uh, there's a line item for that, and we've actually exhausted, we talked a little bit about that, I think at the last meeting. That fund was exhausted. And we actually are probably gonna have to go to a reserve fund to actually fund when Chief Haglen retires, the remaining buyout on his, for this, because he's retiring before the end of this fiscal year. So, that fund will need to be replenished, so that future retirements like Steve Shepard and possibly others that we might be aware of, there'll be funds available to him. That's not in that fund.
And that's part of the 125?
I don't believe so, I think this is...
So, you're looking in the thing that's referred to as employee compensations at the end?
Yes.
Right, okay. And there's all line items, there's salaries, sick, official vacation, and vacation...
19.
If you go to the, the last category, there's the comp absences category. Have, we have the, we have the breakout, and I can show that to you as well. That shows basically what that, how that fund has basically been funded and used, funded, used, and sort of a, these funds are specifically earmarked for those specific uses. So, we can't use it to supplement the budget with, the chief needs a new cruiser or whatever. This is specifically for absences. So, the, we do our best to make a projection on, my understanding, my predecessors have sent an email out saying, does anyone paraphrase me, who's retiring this year? And a lot of people are afraid to say that, you know, raise their hand, because then people know. So, it's sort of a little bit of a guessing game to try to come up with what the right number is, but we know Steve, again, Steve Shepard, we know he's retiring, and there's a few others we might take a close look at. But that line, the comp absences, is what, is based, that line item is what we do to compensate for the...
Is that on page 19?
It's on page 20.
Has Chief Haglen told us when he's leaving?
His last day will be the end of April.
It was different than thought, what, the end of June?
He, uh, Wayne Massachusetts Law Works, your 65th birthday, you're made to retire ultimately. So, he's, um, he is a, he said to me, he said, I wish I could stay longer. But that'll be his retirement based on his birth date, I believe, and so it's the end, the tail end of April.
When is the Assessment Center scheduled, or October?
So, we posted the position for the new police chief position. We have a consult board, he went, John Perro. It'll run to the end of February, February 28th. Last week, it posted for three days, we already had five applications coming, external applications coming.
Compensated absences is what, comp time?
It's not, so the way this, it, it's a little deceiving. The comp absences actually represents compensation for absences, so vacation time and, and sick time. The way they word it here is a little deceiving, because we have comp time in a different sense.
Okay.
So, you're assessing when somebody leaves?
That's the line we...
This is all in for somebody leaving?
Exactly.
Unused, vacation, and sick time, that's what this is.
Otherwise, those accruals, you might have heard, yeah, accruals in the department, that's when they retire. We're putting safeguards in there, you know, contracted employees, there are some safeguards to carry over days and stuff like that. There's a multiplier typically, per the personnel guidelines, it's, you have 220 days that you can carry over in sick time, but there's a multiplier of 25% of that that you can actually get paid out on.
You can carry over 220 sick days?
That's, yes, per the personnel guidelines, that's what exists today.
We're gonna make changes here. This is, this is where things have been, so, yes, I know, mine's all open too, and I agree.
Well, it adds up, it does.
We don't pay for all 220 if they...
No, we multiply, we, so we do that, there's 220 days, we multiply, we do the amount of hours associated with that, multiply it by 25%.
55 days.
Right, and then basically you...
It's gonna change.
We pay on that.
It's gonna change.
So, when we do the HR, or the audit we're doing right now with the Collins Foundation, the draft should be, to be married shortly. That's, I've spoken with Mary, we have a meeting, I think it's a week or later this week, the consultant. I've already voiced sort of my grievances. But there's certain things in there I think we can do better, and I think the team understands that as well. That for them, talking with them, and what I've been saying is, whatever changes we make, and there will be changes, it's gonna be based on fairness and equitable, and equitable. We want to be consistent in how we approach things. I told Mary, I said, I want the least amount of discretion as possible, in some regards, because then it, it's prescriptive, and people know what to expect. Carrying over 10 days, or currently even carry up to one week vacation, but you have, the way it's worded, it's only an extreme or emergency situation. In practice, anyone who didn't use their days would make the request, and it was granted. So, I'm starting to get those requested, and I'm saying, okay, well, the letter of the law says this. I don't necessarily agree with the fact that someone shouldn't be entitled to carry X amount of days over, but limited to that amount, it just, it automatically carries. Because people shouldn't be worrying about tracking necessarily how many days, and going through the proper protocols, and putting in a request at a certain time between this window. It should, it should be prescriptive, and then it just happens. So, it's fair, consistent for everybody, whatever that, whatever that is.
Businesses don't have this anymore. You just can't carry over like this. This is there in case you get sick, so you don't have to worry about coming in to get paid, but you can stay home and get better.
Kevin's contract is automatic. See, we've started something with his contract, and it, it's within reason, it's not unlike a lot of public companies, you know, private, private owned company, I should say.
Which limits the carryover.
Yeah, I think you get 10 days carryover, capped at 10 over.
You can't carry every year, just the max.
Exactly, so you get 10 in the year, and you can carry 10 overs, you get 20 in a year.
And it never goes above that.
And if you don't use any sick time, you'll always have 20.
And so, one of the other issues too is the, the way it's...
Probably with the not compensated upon retirement.
The new way.
The new way.
So, the other, one of the other issues is that if you are granted the carryover time, and then you sort of, it, it says in the regulations that you have to use it within that next year. You also receive your other time and the hours that you have for vacation that you, you get at the, at the beginning of that year. So, then it's hard to pull out which is being carried over and which is not, so there's, there's...
It should hit that mark that says you just don't go above that number.
That's exactly right. It doesn't currently have the, that ceiling per se, it just says you, it, I think when we do this comprehensively, and we will this, hopefully in the next few months, we'll start ramping it up, we'll be looking at all of that, and we're gonna make some recommendations that will hopefully, like I said, I believe department heads are ready for it, because I say that at every department head meeting, we're working on this, be prepared for this, so there aren't any surprises. And so, it will, usually, people understand why we're doing it and the process we're taking, and they're not surprised by it. People tend to respond in least understanding, might not agree at the end of the day. But I think the fact that, when I interviewed people when I first came on, they, you know, that was something I heard time and time again, is just be consistent and fair. And I think this is gonna allow us to do that. And then we talked about comp time, the, the operational comp time, not the, not the accrual component of it, but comp time. You know, last department head meeting, we talked about, two, last two department head meetings, we put some safeguards in the interim, because we don't know what comp time's gonna look like in a few months, but a process for people to take it and understand and expectation of what comp time should be, or shouldn't be. If you work an extra 15 minutes at the end of the day, as a department head, that's your job. If you come in to clean your office on a weekend because you just need to catch up on... If you come in to clean your office on a weekend because you just need to catch up on cleaning your office, to me, that is not comp time. If you're here for the elections, for a special election, and you're here four nights of the week for an extra four hours, and you know what's happening ahead of time, that, to me, is something that would be rewarded in a comp time. So we're putting those safeguards in place and understanding throughout the departments.
Well, you're putting some controls in place too, so that somebody knows what the hell's going on. We haven't known what's been going on for years.
Kevin, you have a gain on this too. And this is an application to town administrators to apply for comp time. And they have to apply to you saying, "I want to use it here for this."
Correct.
It's kind of a check coming in and a check going out on comp time. So I think it could be a good start.
Relative to like HR policies, when the audit comes in and identifies things that we already know about, like the fold comes in, can you just make the changes in a given year, change the policy as the HR director?
So I'll probably work pretty hard with the consultant and looking at our existing, and with you folks. Because I wanna make sure you're understanding on board with what we're looking to do as well. And then what we'll probably do is... This is sort of what, you know, back of the nap, you kind of plan, but this is what I envision it. Get the results reconciled with what I've identified as being problematic. Put forth to you folks some recommendations of what I think we should do comprehensively. Can't be just comp time, or it can't just be, you know, the case. It needs to be the entirety of it. And then go through it with you folks, and then get your feedback on it. And then if it's something that you feel comfortable with, take it to the formal hearing and have you folks take it up and make a vote to pass it as are your policies and procedures for the HR.
I know you've been working so many numbers, so you probably haven't had a chance to do this. But just now, bringing it up to the high level, do we know what it is costing us in carryover sick time and comp time? How big are those buckets?
Well, it depends. So we just had three recent retirements. Dave Bond, Barbara, and Glenn, although you still seem around the building. And all of them varied from different numbers, but they were typically five figures.
Per?
Per person. Per. So you're looking, there's three ways...
You see how big that problem is?
We don't accrue for that either, right?
In the sense of...
Well, sort of do with this line item here, compensation.
You never have enough.
You're accruing for that liability. Yeah. We sort of do here, but the fact of the matter is it's...
And comp times, we're in a sense of how much we're paying in comp time? Is there a comp time line item anywhere?
So we don't... Comp time, we don't pay. It's just, it's...
Unless they leave.
So if you're working forty hours a week, and you work forty-five, and I was to give you five hours of comp time, you should work in the elections, you then use it like you would a vacation day. And so the actual obligation from a dollar number doesn't change. It's just that you're physically not gonna be in there for those...
Until they retire?
Until they retire and you've accumulated X amount. The comp time is not something that we pay out on.
Oh, you don't?
We do not.
It's vacation. It's vacation time and sick time. And then the accrual. So the way it's been handled historically, again, the personnel regulations, it wasn't necessarily as prescriptive as it could have been. The way they've been handling it historically before I came in with Barbara and people prior to her, and the way that the first couple came through is, on your anniversary date, you accumulate your full amount of days for that year. Which is fine, which is fine. What they've done is accounted for... It'd be a lot easier if I had one of those breakout sheets in it. But what they've accounted for is if your start date is July one, you retire December thirty-first, you carry over those six months worth. Those you get paid out, and assuming you didn't take any vacation time. Sick time as well at that, at that twenty-five percent of up to the two-hundred-and-twenty.
The comp time, we don't pay out, but I think it shows itself with requests for additional manpower, additional hours.
Yeah, it's huge in the back door like that.
It's huge in the back door like we're seeing.
Yeah, but the girl that worked for me doesn't have enough time to get the job done, so...
The other unseen thing is that if you have somebody who's out on comp time, they're not there to collaborate on whatever the issue of the day may be.
And service stuff.
It's difficult to quantify it in specifics, but there are potentially some efficiency pieces. The other thing is that the extent that a sense of unfairness might permeate attitudes in a given office or something, whether that can underlie...
It also makes it so that you don't have to take a hard look at what you're doing, because your time just keeps growing, as opposed to saying, "I have forty hours." There are some things we should just stop, or we should find a way to do better. If it just keeps growing, you know, you leave things the way they are, you add things here and there, and it gets very inefficient, so it's good that you're looking at it.
Yeah, and I think it's... There's a balance to that, right? So if people are working forty-five hours because, and it's appropriate, they're taking that comp time because they had to be in the office, and they're doing it consistently because they're... And they're working efficiently. It's not a ma... It's just a capacity issue. And you... Some of these line items, as you're aware, people have asked for a few hours additional for some of their employees in their department's administrative support. Again, I'm watching it, I'm learning it, I'm trying to understand how the departments are operating. It's too premature for me to say this is appropriate here or not appropriate there. That being said though, for sake of argument, you might have somebody who's working that... Working completely, and we have a credible team working very hard every day. I mean, I am very impressed, and I'm not just saying that. You know, every community's a little bit different about the expectations, but you know, those people here take pride in their work and they do really great work.
They absolutely do. The one thing I'll use as an example, and I don't really know, because I don't know the air workings, but on the surface, one department that's asking for additional hours is the same department who is expanding their services for the flu clinic, because the numbers are growing. That's a nice-to-have service. If we drove three minutes down the road, CVS gives the flu shot away free. So it's a nice-to-have that we do, which is great. The numbers are growing. Now that department needs additional people, and we need additional money. So that's one of those things that you look at and say, okay, as the budget continues to go up and up, at what point do we stop and say, "We just can't continue to add services?" You know? It's a service versus budget.
It's fair. I mean, this analysis I worked on, which basically comes out of the weeds for a second, looks at the overall. I was talking to Kevin, I said, "I wanna get to where if everyone's doing what they've been asked to do on the three percent, how are we affecting it? Are we lining up our dollars and cents on this?" And we worked on it this week, and I drew it out, and she looked at it, and she said, "Oh yeah, we gotta put the water direct in there," because we account for it in the budget, the water component, but we have to take in the revenue side of it. So we went back and forth to vet that number. You know, I'll be honest with you, I was pleasantly surprised that we were actually only about twenty-five thousand over. But that's the exception.
That's close to zero, all things considered.
But we need to continue...
And it's a big million-dollar budget, that's pretty close to zero.
And we're one of three components in the budget. So it may be great that we come in this way, but if there was a way for us to get even a little bit lower to help offset the schools, you know, we're one big budget.
The schools are gonna be...
Yeah. That's really... That's absolutely fair. And I think, I mean, knowing where these guys have come in, twelve-point-three-five percent increase. I mean, there's...
What was that?
Twelve-point-three-five percent increase.
Which one is this?
This is the union.
Elementary schools.
And we talked a little bit about that, about some of the Asbury Kindergartens in there. There's a tech line item in there, which, as I understand, has been warned previously, but they're trying to build it into the operating budget. There's some new positions that they've asked for in there. So I'd almost say I wanna compare us to the schools, just be aware of some of the things that are in here, their first sort of application or submission, I think some wish.
So is this twenty-five thousand what's over total revenues coming in versus everything we have so far? I'm thinking, where do we stand outside of the schools? How did we do as a group? Is that the four-point-six percent that we did? Everything about the schools?
So we, in this... Right, so if you take the two-and-a-half percent, then you put in there state aid and local receipts, and those reven... The other revenues that we talked about as well. That... The new growth projected, seventy-five thousand dollars, that gets us to a little bit higher than a... It's higher than the two-and-a-half percent, obviously. And so if you take in, again, three percent for the schools across the board, which you all know they're not there, and it's gonna be probably difficult to get all of them there. But just for sake of giving you clarity of where we are, assuming they meet those guidelines, because I really don't want anything to go off besides the guidelines. And I didn't want to put the actual next, so we sort of then switched the numbers. The hope of this was just to sort of show you folks that those additional three-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars, which is the red, that plus what are our increases in wages and salaries, plus a zero on the other categories, that gets us to almost a level of a balanced budget.
Okay, so we... Am I understanding it right, that we actually had a four-point-six percent increase though over last year? Everything outside of the schools?
Yes. That's my... I wanted, before I say it definitively, because I didn't... We were messing... We were playing with the numbers a little bit yesterday, and I wanted to just make sure I don't have the sheet. We didn't have a chance to get through that before this meeting today, but I wrote it down so I can give you a sense of it's four-point-six. I just don't have the backup to kind of walk you through.
So it's really not the twenty-five thousand that's... We should be looking at right now? We should be looking at, we came in at four-point-six, they're coming in at twelve. You know, so four-point-six is still way over two-and-a-half, the prop two-and-a-half, if we're just looking at our own operation. It's still much higher.
Right, I would just... I would say that, yes, if you're looking strictly at the prop two-and-a-half, yes. But there's new growth component of it that you need some...
Small though.
Seventy-five thousand. Plus the other revenues that are the state aid and local aid, those are real. Everybody incorporates that and above beyond. It doesn't affect your security.
Sure, but I don't know what those increases are over the last year. I'm just trying to look to say, how are we managing our budget relative to last year? How is the school managing their budget? And where going up for the year?
Your question is good, and I think that we need to work on that four-point-six percent.
And a four-point-six, just understand, when you first said it, I thought you meant Town Hall. You're saying that this is all of the town operating?
That's right.
This includes highway?
Yes.
Parking center terrace? All that we do here, wide burn?
Everything about the schools.
Okay. That's at the bottom of this.
That's right, that's this book, version one.
So, and to be absolutely fair, I mean, reality is, you know, like I said, the schools are probably not good either. So, you know, it's how... We wanna take care of our business, do the best we can.
And that's why I'm saying that the twenty-five is great to look at at a high level, but I think we should be looking at the four-point-six, saying, "Why are we four-point-six?"
Why are we not doing better?
Why aren't we doing better? And then we attack the schools.
That's a valid point.
Then we discuss and look at that budget. Wrong charge order.
I mean, if we were stuck with four-point-six percent, we'd get the hell beat out of us by taxpayers.
Yes.
Okay? Because that's rough.
If you... Yes, no, it's certainly, four-point-six is... It's an increase above the two-and-a-half percent. I think the... From the taxpayer, you know, for the two-and-a-half percent, I know, again, I always reference what I know, Beverly, we did two-and-a-half percent every single year. We went up to two-and-a-half percent, and I include the schools in there. Two-and-a-half percent was what we taxed people. But we had all those additional new growth numbers built in. We had the local aid, we had the state aid, we had enterprise funds, et cetera. And what we did is we basically had the school budget and the city budget was, Beverly submitted as one budget, level fund, or balanced to the penny. And so revenues and expenses across everything. System's a little bit different in the town, where we submit a budget, there's guidelines for the schools, and they independently go through their processes of developing their budget and submitting it to their school committee. And so it's a little less...
Controlled.
So the mayor in Beverly can tell the school...
There's separate things going on.
Well, yeah, we don't have any control over half of it.
That's right. So the schools, the mayor would sit down with the superintendent, and they basically say, "What are your needs this year?" And they determine what that is, collectively present that to the school committee, understanding what the number was, because that affects the city side of the budget. Because of the way this is... The way Topsfield operates, and it's not... It's how everybody operates in the town for the most part. It's not unusual by any means, is that the schools independently craft their budget using the guidelines. They come in over, and then they work on, with the school committee, and then the FinCom to bring that number to something where everybody is comfortable with to a certain level. I don't... I say that not to say that everyone's gonna be comfortable with it, but to a point where hopefully the FinCom can approve and back what the proposal is from the school. So there'll be some real conversations between FinCom and the schools regarding their budgets.
Did that have, did you say eight new people in it?
I believe it's eight. I can double-check the exact number.
And populations aren't going up. The question then becomes, and I'm using the Masco model here, whether they're having to take a, you know, forty-five or fifty-five thousand dollar teacher and replace it with a ninety-five thousand dollar specialist. And with Masco, when they did that, they were able to create an ability to provide services to other towns. And so they offset the increase in cost with tuition-paying students from Andover, Andover one other town. But they had to commit on the budget, because they didn't have the commitment from Andover that fiscal year. So it was a... I remember making that argument in town meeting, and it was a big bite. In the end, it ended up saving money for the district. But you gotta be pretty clear where that's gonna go, why it's happening, what it is. I'm very interested in why eight people need to be added.
It's actually ten, my apologies.
There we go.
With a declining population, the numbers are going down.
And that's gonna be the question.
And I mean, in the school, you know, I met, I've told Joey, it's the first time, but I met with Steve Greimer, and he walked me through some of the highlights of their budget, so I can better understand. Again, you know, I share with sort of what our philosophy's been about trying to get that number as tight as possible.
If that number comes in, let's say FinCom says, "We totally agree with you, you made a good case. You're getting the ten people, you have a twelve percent increase, and we have a four-point-six percent increase." And then Masco comes in.
Well, first of all, FinCom ain't gonna do that.
Well, let's just say, for the sake of worst-case scenario, the twelve added to our four-point-six, added to Masco being probably something over three.
It's huge.
What does that give us for an increase in taxes?
See, I... What I would look at, I would say, is what's the dollar amounts, right? So they're looking at a one-point-one million dollar increase. That doesn't... Hold on, I have a sheet on that.
Is that with tech and Masco? That's just elementary, you're saying, one-point-one million dollar increase?
Yeah, and I have spent real time with these guys. I haven't had a chance on the Masco side quite yet. But Tri-Town School Union Fiscal Twenty-One Budget. If you look at the Fiscal Twenty-One level was just short of nine million dollars. The proposed is ten million dollars, difference of one-point-one million dollars, or twelve-point-three-five percent. If you take a three percent increase off of what, which was the guidelines, three percent off the level funding of Fiscal Twenty, that's additional two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars for them. If you take the ten million, fourteen thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-six, their proposed budget, you take what was the three percent increase by guidelines of nine million, one-eighty, that gives you an eight-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, six-hundred-and-nineteen above guidelines.
Above guidelines, eight-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand.
And that's the dollar amount I'd look at, because that's what you would vote at, the turnover, right?
So we've got twenty-five thousand, we've got eight-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, and then we have something coming in from Masco and Tech.
Let me ask a strategic question. This is really a question, no answer necessary. Given the fact that, take Masco as a model, they create a budget independently, they kind of give it to us and say, "Here it is." Given the fact that, take Masco as a model, they create a budget independently, they kind of give it to us and say, here it is. To an extent, you can influence it maybe, but it's kind of a take and leave it. Does it make sense, since we have a Tri-Town Union, should that be a separate warrant article, just as Masco is? Because it's produced in a different way, it's based on different sets of assumptions. We have less of a handle on making the decisions about how it's going to be spent and everything. And there's a piece about kind of pulling that out. First of all, I don't think the people who favor spending however much they want on education would be against that, and it would make it clear that the town is running itself overall better. But as a town, other than providing, you know, support for the schools in terms of some maintenance and so, we don't even do that much for them, it bothers me that it's built into our omnibus budget, because oftentimes it is. I like the elementary schools, I like Scott, but I just get concerned that that one piece of that budget ends up making a lot of hard work across a lot of other departments, kind of get diluted and lost in detention, so.
Is that what we did last year though? We broke it out as a separate warrant article, because they wanted one point one million, and we changed it to six hundred and fifty thousand.
They put the addition in, but not the whole budget.
Wasn't a separate warrant article.
There's no separate warrant article.
It was all part of the budget, but in the budget, there were two columns. There was the column without an override and a column of the override. And that was in the budget. And so it said that if the override passes, then it'll be this column plus that column. If it doesn't, it'll be just this column.
Which is the same thing as putting it separately for a vote for the increase.
I'm talking about having a separate article for just the Tri-Town.
Well, you could certainly make the case for doing that.
The whole school budget?
That's what I'm saying. We have a third is the town work, a third is the elementary schools, and a third is Masco. I'm just looking at kind of a, just thinking of a philosophical direction to go.
So how would people vote? Up, down?
Yeah, well, the same way you do on Masco.
Well, you can't vote down a whole budget, then where are you?
Right, you have to come out of town meeting with a budget.
With a budget. So I think it'd be the increase that you're talking about, allow them to stay within guideline like every other person, but with the increase.
Well, if Masco's budget does not get passed, they are, by the agreement, they have last year's budget to go on. So that they don't have no money, but they're going to have to really.
So they're not even getting the three percent increase. That's like all or nothing. If it doesn't pass, they go back to last year's.
No, it's not all or nothing. It's, they either get it all unless you allow tinkering in town hall, which the Whelan has not chosen to do or wants to do, or you end up with default is what you got last year.
Which means no three percent increase, which they would get if they met guidelines.
And it gets to be very difficult, but the point is, it's not like they can't make payroll for a while.
No, but it's literally any increase is all or nothing in that case. Usually go back to last year's budget with no increase to accommodate a regular.
It provides an incentive to try, first of all, it adds a lot of visibility. It adds a lot of visibility to what you're doing. It is clear that, it separates it. So if the town is doing really well, and we're, you know, as good as that, before we add the schools, then if the schools are the issue, it allows us to focus on the fact the schools are the issue. I mean, a lot of people feel uncomfortable in trying to sort of vote against, I don't think anybody's ever voted against the omnibus budget. I'm not anybody, but I mean, we've never not passed the omnibus budget. But it's with gnashing of teeth and so on, and now coming so much. And I'm wondering if there's some value to taking that piece that causes us to gnash our teeth the most, make it separate because it is produced in a slightly different way, it is a hugely significant piece, it's half of the omnibus. And I truly think it dilutes the good work that's trying to be done on the things we can do directly control, which is the town stuff. So, I mean, that's just my, my take. It'd be a big change, but.
I think you can make a good argument for that.
That to me would be a worthwhile thing to find out whether that's worth doing.
I would look at the town code, just see how it's structured currently. And I think the only, and the only has, it philosophically makes a lot of sense. I think the only concern I'd have is, if you break up the budget into multiple things that people can vote, and give them the option to approve, approve, and deny on that, you really don't have a true operating budget. And that's, well, we'd have to look at it.
This year, we're not talking about that, but it's a new idea.
I think we need to be careful in this sense. You mentioned that they stand on their own, but the town doesn't do much for the schools. It's not totally true. I don't think it makes a big difference here, but let me just point it out that when it's time to snow and there's pollen, that's all done by the town. When it's time to cut the grass and trim the bushes, that's done by the town. The other piece though, that is, so to speak, we don't break out all of the costs for the school as far as insurance goes. And so if in fact we did it as a separate warrant article, it would seem that we would want to break out that this Maya Insurance as the towns and then the schools. I mean, it adds a lot of complexity.
I agree, it's very complex.
To be trying to be honest with people, to see the real thing, because that's where, that's where you really see, oh, the schools really do cost a lot.
Yeah, even more than you see in that budget.
You see right here. So it's, it's, it's a good idea, but it is a complex.
I realize it's very complex. I don't want to derail us. I had to sort of get out the fact that I think we have this structural issue in trying to manage the elementary school budget. And I think it's something for us to perhaps talk about. It is very fraught with challenges. I agree, there are big differences between Masco and here, and insurances and so on and so forth. But I am increasingly, each year I'm on the board, vexed by the, basically, there's all this work to shave a quarter percent here and really kind of hold back, and we won't get three copiers, we'll get two for the next, whatever the case is. And then bang, we get hit with this overwhelming tsunami of school costs. And so just as a thing to think about for the future, I'm inclined to have that conversation, whether we end up deciding it's worth it. But for now, we're not doing that for this year, so.
Well, it goes in the category of the fact that we've got a bunch of red items here that are steps and levels increases. And we're not going to be able to do anything about that this year, I'm sure. Maybe to some extent we can, I hope we can. We've got contract negotiations that are going to affect that a little bit, because those people are, are going to not want to give up their vacation pay and their retirement pay and all that stuff.
And that's why we have negotiations, to discuss all of that.
But, but my point is, you know, there's a lot of evolution that's got to take place, in my opinion, before we can clean up some of this stuff.
I, I would agree. I would not advise doing anything with steps and levels per se, but there's the other component that I think we're going to discuss today, which is in addition to steps and levels. So steps and levels of the two point seven five percent, and then there's the other two percent that historically has been given, just across the board, that really is the discretion of the town hall, based upon the economy, our budget situation, how taxes are going up. That wasn't part of the attempt to close the wage gap between our town hall employees and other towns. That was in addition.
Yeah.
Let me guess.
Well, and of course, my attitude would be, if you're getting a step, and the annual increase would otherwise be greater, would be less than you get the step. And when you get to the top of one of the top step, the question is, what happens then? Oftentimes, what happens when you're in negotiation, or in negotiation with people who are representing others, that they're at the very top step, so they're pushing for the increase.
And it, it could be that it's set up that way to, when they land to have some increase to keep up with inflation, et cetera, but they're not getting steps and levels, so there are ways to handle it.
We did a few times in teacher negotiations, which I thought was very effective. We'd give one time, they weren't bonuses, but they were stipend, you know, we didn't call them stipend, we had another name. But basically it was a one-time payment. The beautiful thing is, it did not go on the salaries. So the salaries didn't go up, it didn't raise the, the numbers on the table and so on. And it allowed for people, particularly at the top, to get what they wanted, but it didn't change the fundamental numbers in the bottom. So this will be, I think, another big discussion for us to have going into next year. But I'm really encouraged, encouraged that we are starting to look at this critically in terms of the structure of it. And you were sort of leading the discussion on the way it is now ain't going to stand, so we're going to have to do something in the future.
So I think it's a great segue, if you want, can we maybe talk about just that? So as I promised you with last, I do some new diligence to get just some clarity around the history around how, at least over the last six years or so, how we've handled increases for employees when it comes to salaries. So there's really two components, as I sort of understand it, and there's the percentage increase that we see each year, which I'll hand this out to you, give you a percentage increase the last few years by the different positions, what it's looked like. So I know this was something early on when you'd requested, and able to pull this together and.
Yeah, this is great.
It shows the different positions that we have, from eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and now twenty-one, what that looks like. Some of the grade-out boxes within the schedules is where there's been some transition. Doesn't incorporate all of it, but when there's been a change in what that, if it's gone down because somebody was on a step eleven, someone comes in at step two, there's a change there. So this is, this is what it is, this is what we've done for pay. We also had in two thousand fourteen, Human Resources Services Incorporated, they did their survey. The letter I drafted up just gives some of the high-level recommendations when it came to the steps and the grade. At the time, they, executive summary of this talks about how their survey showed that Topsfield was below market when it came to compensation for employees. And since that time, they also made two recommendations associated with that. One, the steps and the grades.